I'd like to call the council meeting and budget hearing for fiscal year 2022 to order. If I can have our city clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Flores.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Tharp.
Present.
Councilmember Noble.
Present.
Councilmember Dugo.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Busque.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you all rise for the pledge of allegiance. All right. We'll have a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by councilmember Dugo, second by councilmember Busque. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries five zero. Moving on to comments, comments from the public for agenda items only. Anyone wishing to speak on any agenda item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, moving on to our first topic of the night. We have our first hearing for fiscal year 2022 budget. We have a public hearing for ordinance 2021-12. I have, oh, if I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2021-12, first reading, establishing a taxable valuation in levying an ad valorem tax property located within corporate limits of Green Acres, Florida, as of the year ending December 31st, 2021, providing for appeal to conflict in ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, and we have Terry Berger, our finance director, and our city manager, Andrew McHugh presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the lead for this evening. Thank you very much. There are some procedural things that we're gonna have to go through, but before we do some of the procedural stuff, I, there are certain things that will have to be read into the record as required by Florida statutes. Before we go into that, I just wanted to take a few moments to thank the mayor and council for their support throughout the budget process. It has been a trying couple of years. I think, as you all know, your support has been paramount in everything that we've been doing. We're truly grateful we've been able to still get a lot of projects done as a city, so we're very thankful for that. We appreciate that going into fiscal year 22, we appreciate the support of the recommendations that we had made going into the new fiscal year, so we're looking forward to doing, continuing on the progress that we've made thus far, but we are truly grateful for your support going through the last budget and then also going into this new budget. Additionally, I wanted to thank our budget director and also our budget analyst for all of their hard work on the budget that I am very proud to present to you tonight, and without a doubt have to thank the directors as well. As you'll see when we go through the budget, they truly did the best that they could to be efficient with the dollars that they were allocated during the fiscal year, so the current fiscal year is ending well. Going into the new fiscal year, they've been very efficient with managing the dollars going into the new year, so I am truly grateful for all that effort. It truly is a team effort and very happy and appreciative of it. So what we're gonna do is the first ordinance, ordinance number 2021-12, that is the one where I'm gonna do the most presenting. I will go through and read some procedural things just so that we can have them on the record, and then I will go through the brief presentation that we've prepared with some budget information to go over as well. And after that, we can move on to 2021-13, where most of the presentation will be done at that point. That one is just more of a formality for the requirements that we have to adhere to. So just bear with me as I walk through some of this information that I have here. Florida statutes 200065 specifies that procedural steps must be followed by each unit of local government in the preparation and approval of the government entity's property tax, millage, levy, and annual budget. In accordance with these regulations, the certified taxable property values as of July 1, 2021, provided by the Palm Beach County Property Appraiser, will be used to determine the ad valorem tax proceeds in the calculation of the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. Taxing authorities such as our city must hold two public hearings to adopt a millage rate and a budget. This evening's hearing is the first public hearing of the City of Green Acres to adopt a tentative millage rate and the budget for fiscal year 2021-22. The tentative millage rate and the budget must be adopted by separate votes pursuant to direction provided by the city council at the budget workshops that were held on June 7th and the budget meeting held on July 19th. Staff has prepared two ordinances required by the truth and millage process for approval by the city council. The ordinance to establish the taxable value and set the ad valorem rate, which is ordinance 2021-12, must be passed first, followed by the ordinance to adopt the budget, ordinance 2021-13. The first ordinance, 2021-12, establishes the taxable value and sets the ad valorem rate. The certified total taxable value of $2,261,68,339 provided by the property appraiser's office is $117,368,545 more than last year's certified taxable value of $2,143,699,794. The 5.48% increase in taxable value is due to an increase in property values along with an increase in new construction. One of the things that wanted to note, understanding that the housing market has seen just an unprecedented boom over the last year and the prices are going, are skyrocketing, when we received these valuations, they were as of January 1, so we anticipate that, you know, a lot of those increases in values didn't happen until after January 1, so we're anticipating to see a higher percentage increase reflected in next year as of January 1. The millage rate of 6.400 mils applicable to the general fund levy for fiscal year 2022 is 5.39% greater than the calculated rollback millage rate pursuant to section 200.0651 of Florida statutes of 6.0727 mils that generates the same amount of property tax revenue as last year on existing real and personal property. The property tax rate of 6.400 mils set by ordinance 2021-12 will generate $13,892,004 of ad valorem revenue or $721,112 more than the fiscal year 2021. The first budget hearing was advertised in the preliminary tax assessment notices as required in Florida statutes 200.065. Due to a change in date for the first budget hearing, it was re-advertised on August 22nd, 27th, in a newspaper of local circulation. So that is the procedural language that we need to read into the record, so I wanted to be able to go through the presentation to go over some of the numbers a little more in depth for you if we can. Okay. The first item you're looking at is the general fund revenue and expenditure summary. What this is, is the fiscal year 2021 budget and also the fiscal year 2022 adopted budget. So last year around this time, when the council was looking to adopt the fiscal year, the current budget that we're in, fiscal year 2021, we were looking at excess expenditures actually over revenue in the amount of $23,548, which we would've had to fill that gap from the general fund to be able to balance the budget going into fiscal year 21. And then going into fiscal year 22, which is the proposed budget, we are actually looking at total revenue over total expenditures of $384,872. A couple of things to note as part of that, which I think is very important to be able to look at is that, you know, we read a lot over the past year and understanding that all municipalities in Palm Beach County have received dollars, whether it's CARES dollars, American Rescue Plan dollars. It truly is amazing that we've been able to go through a budget where we have not had to use those dollars to be able to balance our budget. So really proud to present that, and I wanted to make sure that the council was aware of that. I know that there was a lot of uncertainty in the market. We were projecting that revenues were gonna come in less, and we were seeing that revenues were really coming in pretty high closer to the end of the year, so that really provided for what you're going to look at on the next slide. So on the next slide, we're looking at the 2021 forecast and the 22 proposed budget. Looking at the forecast, now remember, on the previous side, when we were looking at just the budgeted amounts of fiscal year 2021, we were looking at a deficit of $23,000. Looking at the forecast and seeing what the numbers are, seeing what the expenditures were from the departments, we're looking to end fiscal year 21 at $811,983 to the good. So rather than a deficit, we're going to be ending the year with almost $1 million unspent. Really proud to present that, and again, thanking the directors for all of their effort and as efficient as they could've been in managing their budgets. And then also fiscal year 22, as was on the previous slide, going into fiscal year 22, we are looking at revenues over expenditures of $384,872. I don't think I have anything else to present on that one. So then moving on to the next slide, you're going to see the budget summary for all funds. We're maintaining the 6.400 millage. This shows the revenue and expenditures for all funds. There is an, there is a pretty significant increase from last year over this year. I think last year was like $39 million for the total budget. This year, we're at $49 million. A lot of that has to do with American Rescue Plan dollars coming into the city. And just as a reminder, the city is receiving $20.5 million in American Rescue Plan dollars. So the city, you know, we've been very fortunate with respect to CARES dollars, ensuring that those dollars were spent for fire rescue and the services that, or the equipment and things that they needed to ensure their safety and those that they were caring for, and just some of the things that we've done internally to try and protect staff as well. So we've managed those dollars as best as we can, and again, I can't say it enough that, you know, we're not going through and having to use dollars that we can now use on things that are going to improve the quality of life of our residents to be able, to have to use those dollars to balance the budget. So very grateful for that, really appreciative of your support. Again, I don't, if there's any questions on 2021-12, staff is recommending approval of that ordinance.
Any comments or questions from the council? City Mayor McHugh, on our handout, unfortunately, page four didn't come out, the values didn't come out perfectly. If you can just email that to us at a later time.
Oh, do you mean this page here? You know what, I did miss that last slide.
The final, the budget summary.
Oh, the bottoms, okay, okay. Oh.
No, no, no big deal. We can see it here on the screen, just email it to us so that we have it.
Okay, our apologies for that. We'll be sure to circulate that for everyone, and I did miss that last slide. That is really just showing what the tax millage rates, and we've maintained the same millage rate for the last four years.
Excellent. So if there is no comment or question, I'd like to, from the council, I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance, oh, I lost my page, where am I? For ordinance 2021-12, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 2021-12.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by councilmember Dugo, second by councilmember Busque. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five zero. All right, moving on to our public hearing for ordinance 2021-13. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2021-13, first reading, adopting an operating budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30 of 2022, providing for appeal to conflict in ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
And once again, we have finance director Terry Berger and our city manager Andrew McHugh presenting.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Mayor. The second ordinance, 2020-1, I'm sorry, 2021-13, adopts and adopts an operating budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022. The proposed budget increases appropriated revenues and expenditures from $38,571,215 in fiscal year 2021 to $49,494,753 in fiscal year 22. The second hearing to set the millage rate and adopt the fiscal year 2022 budget is scheduled for September 22nd, 2021, at 6:00 PM at the city, of the Green Acres City Hall, and will be advertised in a newspaper that has local circulation in the city. If there is no question, staff is recommending approval of ordinance 2021-13.
Are there any comments or questions from the council? All right, seeing none, I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance 2021-13. Anyone wishing to speak, to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Ordinance number 21, 2021-13, on first reading.
All right, I have a motion made by councilmember Busque, second by councilmember Pierce. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five zero. Tonight, we don't have any special business, so we're moving on to the consent agenda. However, before we dive into the consent agenda, I believe Andrew has an announcement to do with item four.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The item on the agenda regarding the award of property and casual and workers' compensation insurance, our human resources worked with our broker to go back out to the market to try and see if we could achieve some savings. The city was able to achieve a decrease in the premium of $143,009, which was a 22.5% decrease in those lines of coverage. The only thing that I'm asking as part of your approval of the consent agenda is that initially that was going to be just for a one-year period. Human Resources was able to work through that and get it for a two-year period, so we're able to lock in those rates for two years. So thank you very much to our human resources for diligently working on that. That's all, thank you.
All right, with that, with that change, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
With the change, correct. Is that, the motion, the motion includes the change, is that correct? Councilmember Busque? And it's second by?
Second, yes.
Deputy Mayor Tharp? All right, so I have a motion made by councilmember Busque, second by deputy mayor Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five zero. All right, moving on to our regular agenda, we have ordinance 2021-07. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2021-07, first reading, amending the future land use map of the future land use element of the city's comprehensive plan to change the future land use designation of one parcel of land totaling approximately 0.2986 acres located on the west side of Martin Avenue approximately 80 feet north of 10th Avenue North from a designation of mixed use to a designation of residential low density, as requested by the petitioner managed land entitlements agent for the owner Turk Investments LLC, providing for repellent conflict in ordinances, providing for severability, providing for a transmittal to the development of economic opportunity, providing for inclusion in the comprehensive plan, and providing for an effective date.
And tonight, we have a new face among us, so I'd be the first one to say welcome. We have zoning administrator Karen Garner Young presenting.
There you go. Can you read? Good. Thank you very much for that welcome, and I'm very happy to be here. It's been great. Your staff's been really wonderful, very welcoming, so I've been very, very lucky. Tonight, we have two items actually in front that I'll be handling. They're pairs. The first step is a land use amendment. The second step is the zoning amendment that needs to be done for the land use amendment, which is the first step we have to do. We have to swear in, anybody, oh, no, that's the zoning. So the first thing we're gonna do is the land use. This is a particular parcel that's on Martin Avenue, as you can see by the square. It's about 80 feet north of 10th Avenue North. It is presently vacant. The proposed use is two single-family homes. The land use presently is a mixed-use land use. The proposed is to make it residential, low-density. In order to make a recommendation to this body or to other bodies, we have to go through an analysis. We have done that. Through the analysis, we have taken and looked at various aspects to it. So the first thing we took a look at was compatibility. Going back, you can kind of see the, what they're seeking is very similar. The yellow color is the same. It's a very low-density. We had to look at concurrency. In other words, can we provide the services? Because it is only single-family homes, it's very low requirements. We have to look for compatibility with the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. We've looked at that. They encourage infill, which is what this is, rather than going out and doing urban sprawl. And the last one we take a look at is chapter 163, which is basically local municipality rules, and it requires us to follow certain procedures in order to be able to adopt what this is, which is a future land use map change. And so we are following those procedures, which is why we're here in front of you today. This item was reviewed by the local planning agency, which is the agency that reviews land use amendments. They did on August 18th, they held a meeting and was recommending approval six zero. At this time, I'm asking that we include our file as well as the staff report as part of the record, and staff is recommending approval in conjunction with the local planning agency. Tonight, we do have a representative who is here tonight. I'm sorry. Why don't you come up to the podium and please introduce yourself?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Michael Sanchez. I'm with Managed Land Entitlements. I'm an agent for the property owner. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. I just have a very brief presentation. This is a relatively simple application, but if you could put up the presentation, I'll just go over a few slides and you can go to the next slide. Thank you. So again, this is a, this is a .3 acre property. It's on the west side of Martin Avenue. It's set back one property from 10th Avenue, as you'll see in the, in the aerial here. So along 10th Avenue, there's a, there's a commercial sort of strip center, if you will. To the north and across the street, and actually all the way up the street, you have primarily or exclusively multifamily and single-family uses. This property has a mixed-use land use designation, and I'll also talk about the zoning, which will be the next one, but they're kind of part and parcel. That's a bird's eye view. You can see, you know, again, to the north and across the street, and all the way up the road is, are just single-family and multifamily residential. So for, for some reason, this property has a mixed-use designation. You really, being only .3 acres, you really can't build a mixed-use project and, and put all the parking and the buffers and a building and everything. It's just, it's, it's not possible to develop multifamily, so my client bought the property with the intention of subdividing it and just building two single-family homes, just like, you know, what's, what's existing on the north and across the street. So in order to do that, we had to request the change in the land use designation from mixed-use to residential low-density, similar to what's on the north and across the street. We have submitted the required land use analyses in terms of traffic and intensity. This is actually a reduction in intensity. When you do a future land use change designate, future land use designation change, you have to compare the maximum intensity into the existing land use and the proposed, and we demonstrated that there's actually a reduction. It's only two single-family units, that's a maximum allowed under the proposed land use designation, and we comply with the, in our opinion, the requirements of the comprehensive plan, and we're respectfully requesting your approval.
Staff is here, as well as the petitioner, answer any questions or concerns you may have in reference to the land use amendment.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the council? Councilmember Dugo.
I sort of like, and bear with me, I realize it sets away from 10th, but it looks like it's sitting really close to commercial property?
Yes, ma'am. It's right, it's right adjacent to commercial property, so if, if these amendments are approved, we'll have to go through the minor subdivision process with the city staff, and there will be two lots, one of which will be right against the, the commercial property there that's along 10th Avenue, but that's not uncommon. Typically, you have commercial properties along the main corridor, and then right behind it, you'll have a single-family residential or multifamily.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the council? Quick question, Michael. By the way, thank you for the presentation. Does the, the owner of the property, does he have any other properties in, in Green Acres right now?
He does. He's the owner of the Green Bazaar Cafe, excuse me, not cafe, but the grocery store.
Got it. Okay. Thank you so much. If there is no other comments or questions, do I have a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-07, first reading.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by councilmember Pierce and second by deputy mayor Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five zero. All right, moving on to our next item, which is a quasi-judicial public hearing for ordinance 2021-08. If I can have the city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2021-08, first reading, approving a zoning change for one parcel of land totaling approximately 0.2986 acres located on the west side of Martin Avenue approximately 80 feet north of 10th Avenue North from a designation of mixed development original section to a designation of residential low three, as requested by the petitioner managed land entitlements agent for the owner Turk Investments LLC, providing for changes to the official zoning map, providing for repellent conflict in ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
And I believe our zoning administrator Karen Garner Young is going to read the quasi-judicial hearing process. Is that?
Well, I was looking for the form we had, and unfortunately, I couldn't find it, but we can talk.
Okay, we, we, we got this.
Okay.
I think so. All right, so we're gonna start with, the clerk is gonna administer the oath for anyone that's gonna be addressing the council.
Those who will be providing testimony, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, you may be seated.
All right, we already read the, the ordinance by, by title, so we're good there. Now, I gotta ask the council if they have, if they have to disclose any ex parte communication. I'm gonna start to my left, councilmember Pierce.
None.
Councilmember Dugo.
None.
Councilmember Noble.
None.
Deputy Mayor Tharp.
None.
And councilmember Busque.
None.
And I have not had any myself. So at this point in time, I'm asking the applicant to come up to the podium, state their name and address for the record, and do their presentation, or did we already do the presentation?
Mayor, you have, you could go both ways. I think there's a little bit more information we're not gonna repeat unless there's a desire from the council to do so on the information. It's the same parcel as we discussed in the previous petition. So I think at this point, the petitioner would just discuss a little bit more regarding zoning.
Excellent.
Just one, one item to add, and again, Michael Sanchez, for the record, addresses 3710 Buckeye Street, Suite 100 in Palm Beach Gardens. The only thing to add, Mr. Mayor and council, is this slide which shows the zoning. So the zoning is mixed development original section, which is shown in blue. We're asking to rezone the property to the same zoning district as the properties to the north and across the street, which is residential low-density three. This is consistent with the future land use change that was just approved, and I have nothing else to add. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. I believe at this point in time, I'm gonna ask our staff to introduce yourself and to do your presentation.
Excellent. My name is Karen Gardner Young, zoning administrator for the City of Green Acres. Let me just pull up our PowerPoint. Okay. So again, this is a parcel located on Martin Avenue on the west side of the, about 80 feet north of 10th Avenue North. This is first reading of a zoning change request. It is a quasi-judicial hearing. It is a public hearing that we're required to follow through with. Again, the use of the property is vacant right now. The intent is to have two single-family residences. The zoning is mixed-use development original section, or M X D O S. The request is to make it residential L three, so residential low three. Again, as you can see how it is adjacent to potential RL three as well, although noted that to the south is a commercial. that to the south is a commercial parcel that's located there. Again, to support any type of zoning change requires an analysis. In our staff report, we've indicated that it does comply with our future land use element as well as our housing element. And it does comply with a residential land use designation, which you previously approved on first reading. The two have to match based on what you previously provided and with what's being proposed today, which also requires two readings. You are in compliance. This item has been reviewed by the land development staff on May 13th. There were no objections. It was also reviewed by the planning commission on August 18th with a six-zero recommendation of approval. I would ask at this time that we include our staff report and files as part of the record, and staff is making a recommendation of approval. Again, staff and the petitioner are here to answer any questions or concerns that you may have.
Excellent. This time, I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance 2021-08. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right. Public hearing is now closed. At this time, are there any comments or questions from the council for the, for our staff or for the presenter?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-08, first reading.
All right. I have a motion made by council member Pierce, second by council member Noble. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That motion carries five zero.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, Michael, if you just pass on your client, a special thank you on behalf of the council, the mayor and the city manager for having his business interests in Green Acres. Thank you, sir.
All right. At this time, we're moving on to item 10, public hearing, ordinance 2021-09. If I can have our city clerk, please, Cole, read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2021-09, second reading, adopting Chapter Four Buildings and Building Regulations, Section Four through Five, as the Unsafe Building Abatement Code, providing for purpose, authority, establishment of a district, definitions, enforcement, emergencies, abatement, collection of costs, appeals, and other purposes, providing for conflicts, severability, codification, and an effective date.
All right. And today, we have our city manager, Andrew McHugh, presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance on second reading, 2021-09, is providing the city the mechanism to address through demolition unsafe buildings and structures within the city considered to be a nuisance. Currently, the city code does not address unsafe buildings that have not been maintained adequately and where the city has exhausted all other remedies without compliance. This change will address that. There have been no changes since first reading. Staff is recommending approval of ordinance 2021-09.
Are there any comments or questions for, for our city manager from the council? Seeing none, are there, do I have a motion?
No.
Public hearing. Oh, it's public hearing, you're correct. All right. At this time, I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance 2021-09. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Don't everybody get up at once? All right. Seeing none, moving on, uh, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion?
Motion for ordinance 2021-09.
Second.
All right. I have a motion made by council member Dugo, second by deputy mayor Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That motion carries five zero. All right. Moving on to our next public hearing, ordinance 2021-10. If I could have the city clerk, please, read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2021-10, second reading, amending Section Two dash two seven zero definitions and non-apple alarm assessment to include additional sections for demolitions, providing for conflicts, severability, codification, and ineffective date.
And once again, we have our city manager, Andrew McHugh, presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance, 2021-10, is the companion to the ordinance that was just previously approved by the council. This ordinance is amending Chapter Two so that the city may levy and assess the demolition of a structure determined to be unsafe in the city in order to recoup the expenditure. There are no changes since first reading. Staff is recommending approval of ordinance 2021-10.
All right. I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance 2021-10. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion?
No move.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-10, second reading.
Second.
All right. I have a motion made by council member Pierce, second by deputy mayor Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That motion carries five zero. Moving on to our discussion item tonight, item 12, employee vaccination and vaccination incentive program. We have city manager McHugh presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. I think would probably be appropriate, I know this was an item that you had brought up at the last council meeting, so I'd like to be able to defer to you for any comments that you'd like to make related to this. We are very fortunate this evening that the representative from our city attorney's office is also our labor and employment attorney, so the timing is perfect to be able to have this discussion and get some feedback and thoughts from her as well. So please, if, if there's anything, and I can absolutely speak to any of the operational items as it relates to, you know, any issues related to COVID.
Excellent. Yeah, so I, I brought this up as part of my mayor's report last time. I kind of wanted to get a feeling for how many employees were vaccinated. Also wanted to know what, what role we played in making sure that our, our fellow employees are, are safe, that everybody is kept, not only our fellow employees, but also the people that we serve, especially if they're interacting with folks that perhaps are not vaccinated. So it's, I, I really wanted to get a good gauge, and I think that was the question. I think you had at that point responded about, you felt 50% of the population of our employees were, were vaccinated. So I was trying to get, you know, sort of creative in, in a way, an incentive that we can provide those people that have already gotten vaccinated for going out and doing so, but also to encourage others to, to also get vaccinated. And I guess what legal liabilities do we run in, in that case? And what if somebody can claim that they got COVID from, from one of our staff members or something like that? So I guess that's kind of what the discussion that I wanted to, to hold today with, with council members, city manager, and our attorney. So that's kind of what I was thinking. Hopefully, I know that we got some, some dollars that might be able to, that we might be able to tap into, to, to give that little token of appreciation to the employees that they get vaccinated.
Okay. What I will say from an operation, operational perspective, before I turn it over to our attorney, is that operationally, we've actually fared very well to date. Knock on wood that we fared very well. I would say from a fire rescue perspective, I think we're looking at potentially 70% of the staff within fire rescue at this point are either fully vaccinated or have received their first vaccine, which is a good number. And then also, from a general employee perspective, we're looking at over 50%. I would say probably around 60%. I think that that number could be higher, but you know, we don't ask the questions, so we don't know. I will say that we have had some conversations with employees that, that are not vaccinated related to incentives and thoughts, you know, regarding providing incentives and the employees that have made the decision to not be vaccinated, for whatever reason they've made those decisions or personal reasons. I don't expect, now granted, depending on what the incentive is, maybe that's a different story, but I don't expect that, you know, incentives that, you know, the council may consider or that we may look into would incentivize some of those folks for, to, to get vaccinated. So I'm not 100% sure. It's worth looking into, but from a legal perspective, I will turn it over to our attorney. But from operationally, again, we've been very lucky. When the Delta variant started to gain a little bit of momentum, we did see some numbers there in the beginning. We were a little concerned, but that has truly leveled off. We have not had any issues operationally amongst any of the departments related to COVID. So we, we, that has contributed to, I think, the number of employees that are vaccinated, and then also contributing to the number of employees that truly are supporting the directives that we're giving related to their safety and the public safety, and they're taking it very seriously. So we are grateful for that. So I can turn it over to you, Laura.
All right. Well, thank you. And again, happy to be here tonight, and I certainly defer to your city manager on any operational issues and, and things related to what's actually going on in the city. And the good news is, it sounds like it's thus far been a successful program to prevent COVID. With that said, you know, there are a number of different options that local governments are looking into or maybe have implemented with respect to incentives. There are some challenges and nuances we would need to look into more closely on some of those things if the council were interested in doing something. So for example, we have seen leave time provided to employees to get vaccinated. We have seen folks considering, you know, leave time associated with adverse reactions to the vaccination, where they're not dipping into their sick leave. One of the practical considerations with all of these types of incentives, whether it's, and I'll get something, you know, considerations, is how, if at all, the city could handle employees who have already been vaccinated. Gen, excuse me, generally speaking, as a local government, we have some limitations under what's called an extra compensation statute, where we really cannot provide wages to someone for work already performed that they didn't get paid for initially. So if we are looking backwards to employees who've already gotten vaccinated, I'm not sure what our authority level is to do something for those employees, so we would need to look at that much more closely. With that said, we have also seen some organizations starting to look into incentives through their wellness program, through their health insurance. So that is something that could be looked into. There are limitations under the Employee Retirement Security Act where there are limitations in terms of the Affordable Care Act and how much of an incentive you can provide, because it cannot be deemed more than likely to be coercive. So to Ms. McHugh's point, you know, sometimes we're not dealing with a whole lot of dollars or, or benefit that employee might actually be incentivized by, depending on our plan structure. So that would be something we would need to work with our broker on very specifically if that were of interest. There are some organizations beginning to look into, similar to a, a number of years ago, premium surcharges with respect to, back in the day, folks were looking at, for smokers, they were charging a higher level premium. So instead of a carrot, more of a stick approach. So that is something some other organizations are exploring in the local government arena. I'm not aware of any that have implemented that yet, or if that is something they have moved towards. We have seen some employers creating leave policies that differentiate between vaccinated and unvaccinated employees. So if a vaccinated employee were to contract COVID, that there would be a separate leave bank provided. But again, that is something we would want to look into more closely because we want to be very careful about any disparate impact in terms of folks who did not get vaccinated, maybe for a medical reason or a disability or something along those lines, or a religious reason. So those are some of the considerations as you look at different types of incentives that we would want to look into if you had an interest in moving in that direction.
So, and, and I'll open it to the council in a few minutes here. Question, how, do we have, how many employees have contracted COVID or missed days because of COVID? Do we have that data?
Uh, I don't, I don't have all the numbers in front of me. I know that, um, I know that it's not, it's not a high percentage. I mean, we're talking, I think, single digits. I don't think that we're looking at double digits of the total number of employees that we have. I don't think that. I think that if there were some issues, it was related to potentially childcare issues or, or things related to that, that were circumstances surrounding COVID-19, but directly affected, we have not felt very much of an impact.
Okay. I'll open it up to the council at this time. Does anybody else want to chime in?
No.
Um, I'll go to council member Dugo and then council member Pierce.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I, I think it was well-intended, a conversation, but I believe there are too many nuances, and I think this is a Pandora's box. So I, I certainly hesitate completely on, on this idea.
Council member Pierce?
I, I, I just want to throw in, I'm not interested in any incentives to our employees. I mean, this is just a quagmire, and you heard the attorney. There's a lot of looking into, very vague. When you start talking about money, I mean, this is not what taxpayers' money's for, is to, please go get a shot. And then if they did get a shot and something happened, then there's another problem. You know, you paid me to get this shot, you forced me, and it just could turn into a quagmire, so I'm not, I'm not interested in doing this.
Mayor.
Uh, council member, I mean, deputy mayor Tharp and then council member Busque.
If, if we were to do anything, I am definitely more of a carrot than a, than a stick as far as the incentive goes. I, I do like the idea that if someone chooses to get vaccinated and they, they get a breakthrough case, you know, it's seven, 10 days that they're out and not using their vacation time. When, when they did something that they, they wanted to do, that they did, and you know, they still ended up with it, I, I don't think they should be punished and lose vacation time because of it. I don't know how to legally do it, but that is just, you know, my, my feelings on it.
Council member Busque?
Yeah, I don't think we're going to coerce anybody who is against getting vaccine to get vaccinated, but I think what we will do is people that have been putting it off for whatever reason, um, those people might get vaccinated. Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of confused about doing an incentive with anything other than sick time, as Mr. Tharp said, so.
Any other thoughts? Council member Dugo.
I just have a question. I mean, I thought HIPAA laws were very, you, you, I mean, whether you've been vaccinated or not, if you're.
I know that there have been some, operationally, that, you know, a lot of the municipalities are doing lots of different things. There are some municipalities that are saying that they want to see proof of vaccination. If you don't provide proof of vaccination, even if you are vaccinated, they are treating you as though you are unvaccinated with respect to whether it is policies related to if you do test positive. There are some municipalities that have policies in place that if you are fully vaccinated, you test positive, you will not have to use your time, and you get up to so many hours of time to be able to cover. That does not cover if your children are, are required to isolate because of school. That is only covering the employee if the employee is fully vaccinated and the employee tests positive. We have not had situations where that was something that really came into play. So, you know, while we know that that's out there, that isn't a policy that we've actually put into place. It is something that we've discussed. There are municipalities that are providing incentives, whether it's $100 incentive. Some are looking at $500 incentives. I think that there was a municipality that was looking at certain types of incentives. I think they pulled back on it only because there were some questions or concerns about the consistency of application, how do they work it? Some municipalities are requiring their employees to get vaccinated by a certain period of time, but if they do not get vaccinated, it's not as though they lose their jobs. It's more that then they are required to get tested every week. We have found that some of that is, is spreading resources pretty thin, you know, getting everybody a lot, testing has significantly increased. We don't have as much testing available, available as we did previously. So getting the, the, the results back from testing has, I think, proved to be a challenge. I know those municipalities that are requiring employees to get tested every week, um, right now, they are doing it in-house, but they are only doing that until a certain period of time. Then the employees are on their own to deal with getting tested and having to use their time or whatever they have to use to get tested. They're trying to use that as an incentive to be able to get vaccinated. So those are the things that we're aware of. We're keeping track. I know our HR director has a lot of communications with her colleagues in the other municipalities in the county. They're on group emails, just what are you doing? This is what we're doing. So there's a lot of information that, you know, I have that she's provided on what everybody's doing, so we're keeping track of it. It's just we haven't necessarily seen the numbers at this point to be able to, to, to put something into play, per se. But, you know, it was brought up in the mayor. Of course, if the mayor and council, we get that direction to move forward with looking at some things, we'll absolutely work with our attorney to do whatever the, the wishes of, are of the mayor and council.
Since this is brought up by me. Since this is brought up, I may, I guess I'll, I'll have the last word here, although I got a feeling that nobody else is, is in favor of doing some sort of incentive. But, you know, the, the messaging is to, for people to get vaccinated and, and I know that there's, everybody has their own reason for, whether you're for or against it, which is why I said it, I, I thought of a, an incentive program to incentivize those that, that did want to because, A, they're, you know, they're being responsible, especially if they have to deal with the public. And, you know, they're also kind of taking care of their fellow employees. So, I am going to be, you know, I, I, I'm going to say here, I, I am in favor of creating some sort of incentive to get our, our staff vaccinated so that, you know, I'm not going to force anyone against their will to do anything that they don't want to do. But if we can encourage through a small incentive, I think that, especially with the dollars that we, we received, I know that we talked about using taxpayer dollars. Well, technically, the federal government borrowed this money and, and gave it to us. So, the money's there for us to create some sort of incentive program if, if we so choose to. I also think that it's, it's only fair for people that have been vaccinated and they contract COVID to get a little bit more leave time because they, they went out of their way and they did the right thing and they still caught COVID. So, I am in favor of, of creating some sort of program that incentivizes those that, that became or received or will receive the vaccine. So, I'm going to do a quick census, consensus here. I have a feeling I know how it's going to end up, but Deputy Mayor Tharp?
Yes, I'm in favor of a vacation leave policy for those individuals.
Councilmember Noble?
I think the issue is too complicated, there's no answer. And I think taking a position one way or the other is, is not appropriate at this time. So, I'm not in favor of what you're suggesting.
Councilmember Dugo?
I'm not in favor.
Councilmember Pierce?
I'm not in favor.
Councilmember Busque?
I'm in favor of looking into it right now. I, I think that doing something with time off and leave and retroactive time off if they've had vaccines and contracted the virus. But I, I'd like to look into it and hear what Laura has to say about it after she researches it.
All right, we'll just leave it with the city manager. If there's any other updates that come forward, then they can bring it up to us. All right. Moving on to comments from the public for non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak, come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, moving on to our city manager's report, City Manager McHugh.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to open up my report, just reading a very quick email that we got through the website from one of our residents. We received this email earlier this week that said, "The utility boxes look great. I love how nice our city looks. The medians on jog, the sidewalks, the utility boxes are great projects and making driving in Green Acres more pleasurable. Thank you to all those involved." So, while it's taken a lot of time to get where we are, we're finally seeing the fruits of all the labor that has been put in for the last couple of years. We know that it's a process. We know that the speed with which sometimes government moves is a little bit slower than others and just all of the steps that we have to take to be able to bring our projects to fruition. But I think people are really starting to see some of the changes and, and, and that, you know, the tangible things that we've been able to do. So, I was very happy about that and very grateful for the staff and all their effort in, in making those projects come to fruition. Just a couple of other announcements. Nine eleven, we know that nine eleven, the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven is this Saturday. The city was planning a, an event in partnership with the United Way at the community center for Saturday morning from nine to eleven. Unfortunately, due to COVID, the public portion of that event has been canceled. The United Way will still be at the community center Saturday morning from nine to eleven, potentially longer until they're done creating disaster kits. So, they will still be doing that. Another thing that the city is going to be doing is, and I apologize that I wasn't aware, but I just recently found out that Freedom Park was renamed following September 11 and, and I was not aware of that. And that was brought to my attention by one of our employees. So, we are going to, I wish I would have known sooner because we would have done something to appropriately honor, you know, nine eleven at the park and, and I'm sorry that something hadn't been done sooner. But knowing that, knowing that just due to COVID, that we're looking at trying to limit crowds, a wreath is going to be placed at the roundabout. We are actually going to do that Friday evening at 5:00 PM in, at the roundabout at Freedom Park. So, if any of the council's interested in coming over for that and with the support of the council, we would like to look at doing some kind of appropriate, just acknowledgement and, and remembrance at Freedom Park. And the most appropriate place, we think, is probably at that roundabout when you come into the park that, that we can have some kind of appropriate memorial. So, we would like to look to do something like that going forward and, and just have that appropriate remembrance there. So, I have that. One of the things that we discussed as part of the budget process when we were going over capital improvement projects was some of the work that is going to be done behind City Hall. Just knowing that the amount of traffic behind City Hall has increased. There are a lot more individuals, whether it's exercising, walking their dogs, just spending more time here at City Hall and, and enjoying the opportunity to be around the lake and, and exercise in our areas. So, of course, as part of those discussions, we've had some conversation about the lot that the city has with putting in a playground, putting in some exercise equipment, putting in some opportunities, you know, for fishing, a dock, different things like that, lighting around the lake. Well, we thought it was a really good opportunity to look at the whole complex as a whole and to be able to look at the building, the exterior of the building and some of the landscaping as well, surrounding the building. We think that this is a really good opportunity to tie some things from the front of the building into the back of the building and be able to make some upgrades. So, with that being said, the building is almost 15 years old. It probably needs a little bit of a makeover on the outside of the building, whether it's related to landscaping, it's related to some of the colors on the building. You know, so we are going to be, with the support of the council, of course, that we would be looking at, you know, making some changes to the exterior in advance of doing some changes on the interior of the building, following that with just, you know, doing some upgrades. As I said, again, I mean, the building is 15 years old, it's in great shape, but we want to be able to do some upgrades as well. So, understanding that we are looking at, at tying some things in from the front of the building to the back of the building, that is going to mean removing some of the lower shrubbery. We will be putting in some hedges, some additional trees, creating a walking path that will tie in from the back through the front to be able to make a contiguous path so that people can enjoy the entire complex. But that was something that I wanted to bring to your attention so that you didn't wonder what was going on and, and ensure that the council did support moving forward with that.
Is that going to be presented at some point?
We can bring, we can bring a presentation to discuss it. We were just going to look at the painting, the landscaping, the, the pavers, things like that around, but we can bring something forward as well.
Does that conclude your report?
The only other thing that I have is that I wanted to congratulate our new Assistant Fire Chief, Phil Kons. He has been permanently appointed to Assistant Fire Chief. We are extremely happy to have him in that role. So, congratulations. That is all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Any comments or questions for the city manager? Councilmember Noble?
I have a few. First of all, Freedom Park name change. Somehow or another, I don't remember that either.
I, it was brought, it was brought to my attention by my executive assistant that that was done.
I would like to have a copy of whatever ordinance or what day or when that was passed and, you know, whether it was the city council. I mean, I'd like to know the specifics on that because somehow or another, I don't remember. Okay. You mentioned something happening Friday, I, I missed that. What were you saying that?
That is the placing of a wreath in, in remembrance of the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven at Freedom Park at 5:00 PM Friday.
5:00 PM wreath, okay.
Correct, at Freedom Park.
Freedom Park, right, okay. Going, going to your comments about upgrading this building. In my opinion, of course, I, I know it was dedicated. The sign is nice that we have that says City, City, City Hall. But I, I would think we could do something a little bit more eye-catching. I don't know, I think it's a little bit too subtle. So, I would have, as we start thinking of things, whether we would want to have a new sign, a new signs in front. The other is the entrance on the west side, which is the one over here. I complained to the previous city manager that it wasn't wide enough. Okay. I find that we don't have an aisle, we don't have a lane, a turning lane to turn in. And with traffic coming down pretty fast, I, I find that pretty narrow, narrow entrance. Granted, there's a pole right there. So, I, I know this is not, I know he didn't want to do it. Okay. So, I would like that, have, have that reviewed as well.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for the city manager? All right, moving on to the, to the city attorney's report.
No report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the mayor and city council report. I'm going to start with Councilmember Busque because she's sitting down below. Councilmember Busque?
Thank you. I wanted to talk about what I now call my little girl. The mural in community park is just amazing. So, kudos to Anthony Hernandez, is it? And I was thinking, perhaps we can get his help on the wall on Melaleuca Lane. So, I'd like to know.
Well, we, you know, initially, there was some discussion regarding that wall there at, at Melaleuca and Haverhill and potentially engaging the schools. You know, of course, understandable because of COVID, we've had some struggles with getting that engagement. Last year, we did get some design concept ideas. I did go over those design concept ideas with, with all of you. There was some thought. I know one of the concepts was a, a kind of continuation of the trees that would go down with some greenery in the trees. We knew that that would be a concept that you'd probably have to be a skilled artist to be able to ensure that it was seamless in its transition. And then there was also some interest in some of the abstract art as well on, on that wall. So, of course, at the direction of the council, that is something we can have a conversation about. But, you know, we have not gotten a lot of response or feedback from the schools. Again, understandably, just they're dealing with a lot and this is probably not something that is on the forefront of what they're looking to do. You know, they, they tried to get themselves engaged last year and they just have a lot going on.
I, I personally would, would love to see a professional do something with that wall specifically because of the height limitations. So, I think a professional could bring that to life, love it.
Okay, so what's the next step?
I think we should bring this up again for discussion. I think that's our normal protocol.
Okay.
Anything else, Councilmember Busque?
No, that's the best.
All right, I'll start to my left, Councilmember Pierce.
And I agree with Paula's analysis, Andrea. And I want to thank Councilwoman Busque for bringing that up. Also want to thank Phil Kons for his moving up the ladder, no pun intended. It's well, well deserved and a long time coming. And I just want to thank the, the general employees. I want to thank all the directors. I want to thank the administrative people. Andrea, your triangle, the finance department, HR department that works with you continuously, day after day. And last but not least, for yourself and everything you've gone through in the last 12 months, how stressful it's been. This is not something that's just an eight-hour job, it's 24/7, 365. We all recognize that. And everybody, on behalf of a grateful council and a mayor, we all want to say thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember, Dugo?
Two quick things. Eight hundred and eleven thousand thank yous to the staff because that's a remarkable job. And my question is to the mayor, I'm, I'm a little confused and correct me if I'm wrong. When you ask the council if they would like to go forward with someone or something with the staff and three council people say no, do we still give direction to the city manager and the attorney? In the case of the vaccine incentive, I thought Mr. Noble, myself and Mr. Pierce were not for a program like that. So, are you still giving direction for them to go forward?
I didn't give direction, I simply said, "Bring us any updates."
Well, doesn't that mean do research and update? I, I don't understand.
They mentioned that, and I don't want to get into this right now, but basically, they said that as things come up, because they talk among cities, if anything comes up, they would share it with us. And that's all I said, "Bring those updates to us."
Fine, okay, thank you for correcting me.
There were no directions to research anything.
Thank you.
Councilmember Noble?
Yeah, and being controversy, controversial in, in the area of updates. Updates are improvements in the, the types of vaccines that are coming out. There are something like 13 different countries that are developing vaccines. So, we may, we have, may have new updates on related to that and antibodies, monochrons that will be around. So, those, those should go into the updates also. The other point that I just want to make, to mention, which I, which is the only point I wanted to mention, is to ask about the roof of the church, the church that's near Aldi's. We were going to bring that up or we were going to have, or at, at minimum, were we going to have someone contact the church owners and ask them to submit a revised?
That, that discussion was had at the last council meeting where, it was either the last council meeting or the council meeting before, where there was some discussion regarding the roof and, and consideration of allowing the shingles to remain on the roof rather than what was initially presented as part of their plan. The, our planning and engineering department is in communication with the owner and the owner is going to be bringing forth a request at some point, but the owner has to submit that request to the city. Yes, they will be bringing a request forward to the city with respect to that.
Thank you.
They had already planned to bring something forward.
That's the update I was looking for. Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Tharp?
First comment was regards to the mural, absolutely amazing. And I'm, I'm more impressed that it only took like five days. That was, I mean, getting the, the media updates was fantastic, an amazing, amazing job. This was on the consent agenda, but I, you know, I want to bring it up after the fact. It's Fire Friday Appreciation Month. Chief, please extend our, our greatest thanks to you and your staff. You, you guys make our lives easy and, and we appreciate it. So, thank you. And that's all I have.
So, for the, for the mayor's report, I have a couple of things that I, I do want to bring up. The first one, the, the president of Palm Beach State College, college has reached out to us. She would like to share with us some updates. However, right now, we have a, a rule put in place where we're not accepting guests to do presentations. So, I would like for us to consider having the president come talk before us since a, a large population of Palm Beach State College resides here in Green Acres. Maybe some of the updates that she has for us affects our residents and I firmly believe that having her here, I don't think is going to put anyone at risk. I believe you received the email, anything else that you want to share with us, City Manager?
No, the only thing that I was going to add is just that at the next council meeting, I was going to just bring up that that directive regarding presentations or I think specifically related to proclamations, that was through October 1st. So, there would be some request for some direction, just going back into, you know, operations as normal with, with that or, you know, continuing to extend that as well. Is it going to be just related to proclamations or presentations as well after October 1?
So, I would, I would like for us to perhaps consider hosting our, the president of Palm Beach State College to do her presentation here in the near future. Did she set a time, a timeframe?
No, no, she did not. She did not extend that, that it needed to be done within a certain period of time. She was just making that request. She was just making that request.
So maybe we can discuss that with that other item next meeting.
Okay.
Perfect. All right. The other thing that I wanted to bring up was, you know, we are entering Hispanic Heritage Month here shortly. It's a cross between September and, and October. And first of all, we couldn't do the proclamation, and one of the things that stood out with, for me, and me being of Hispanic descent, was the large population of the Hispanic community here in Green Acres. And I don't, I don't know that we have anything right now programmed to honor or to celebrate that. I know that Austin shared a little bit with me, Palm Beach County seems to be, are they going to do a bus, a bus wrap or something? Yeah, a bus campaign, so I don't know. I know it's very short notice, but perhaps maybe not this year, but maybe for 2022, we can add it into some of the community programming events, and we can, we can also do something. I mean, I think we celebrate many different times and herages throughout the, the county. I would like to see something for Hispanic Heritage Month moving forward, just, you know, I, I think we, we got to represent the people that, that live here, and Hispanic community seems to be a large population. I'm sort of sad that we weren't able to have publicly present the, the proclamation that we always do for Hispanic Heritage Month. So that's, that's what I wanted to say. What else? I thought I had something else. It escaped me, so I apologize. That concludes all of my comments. Do I have a motion?
No, adjourned.
Listen to it.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Meeting's adjourned.